Good God, we seek your help with our affairs today. Bless this meeting with your divine intelligence and help us to make the best use of our own. We are of diverse opinions here, yet we must wish to mend our differences and reach agreement satisfactory to all. Please share a little of your wisdom with us to help us to do right by all concerned. Thank you for your heavenly blessings. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job.
We welcome you to the Lafayette City Council Meeting. As Presiding Officer and Chair, I would like to announce the following. This is a public hearing. To address the council on any item on this agenda, please fill out the speaker form and submit it to the clerk prior to the call of the agenda item, or you will not be given the opportunity to speak. Staff assistant is available if needed. Item for submission to the council should be handed to the council clerk, Ms. Veronica Williams, seated to my left in the middle. When addressing the council, state your name and title for the official record. The five-minute rule will be in effect. No debating or confrontational statements will be allowed. The front row to my left is for media only. Food and drinks are not allowed in the auditorium. Please silence all phones and electronic devices. Meeting procedures are by resolutions and not by robbing rules of order. All documents with reference to meetings can be found on the LCG website. And finally, the council encourages your involvement in boards or commissions. If interested, please call 337-291-8800. Items number 34 and number 35 are being deferred indefinitely prior to introduction, as these departments are included with the 2% general pay increase introduced during the joint meeting. Due to Election Day requirements, the council meetings for November and December will be on the first and the third Wednesday of each month instead of the typical first and third Tuesday. Chair announcement, the only announcement I have that I'd like everyone to take a moment of silence in memories of what happened in Moore Park the last Monday, I mean, the last Is there any other council announcements? Mr. Mayor, President?
Budget to actual comparison of major funds, August 2020 preliminary, that was submitted to the councils for your review. If you have any question, we have Director Toupes behind me for questions.
Okay, that's it?
That's it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, comments from the public on any other matters that's not on the agenda. Ms. Williams, public comments?
First speaker is Keith Fogg, followed by Will Tealy. And in total, we'll have three speakers.
I'm sorry?
In total, we'll have three speakers.
Okay, thank you.
I want to continue on what I've been asking y'all lately, and that's to amend the Home Rule Charter, the current version. Let's go back in history a little bit, back in 1993 to 1996, when the police chair decided to introduce an ordinance to fully consolidate. They went against the former Lafayette City Charter, which Lafayette former city council would have to allow a vote of the city of Lafayette in order to consolidate the council and to consolidate the mayor president's position. That wasn't done, yet they voted, brought it to a full vote of the parish, which the city of Lafayette, the citizens within the city of Lafayette didn't have a say-so as to whether they wanted it like that. Now, to the current situation at hand, everybody that's sitting on this council, everybody that sits on the parish council, even the mayor president, took an oath of office to stand by the Home Rule Charter and the Louisiana State Constitution. Well, let's talk a little bit about that state constitution. When the previous city parish council decided there was a mistake, found that there was a mistake in the redistricting, they decided to approve a redistricting or ordinance, amendment to the charter by ordinance, that wasn't brought to a vote of the people under the reapproachment law. Well, the reapproachment law only applies to when there's a change in population under the U.S. Senate and the Senate, the Census, excuse me, the U.S. Census. The Census would not change for them to approve that ordinance, that amendment by ordinance. So, this government is operating a charter in violation of the Louisiana State's Constitution. And if you want clarification, ask the city parish attorney to pull up the amendment of local government in the Louisiana State's Constitution. Again, so I'm asking this city council to do what's right. The last public comment at the parish council meeting, I was told I was barking up the wrong tree. So I ask again tonight, am I still barking up the wrong tree? It's sad, it's sad that we got to announce tragedy, when the real tragedy is within the government, it's within the government. And I want to thank Councilwoman Ms. Cooks, Councilwoman Ms. Ebert, and Councilman Pat Lewis, because y'all sit here, y'all listen to our concerns, y'all address our concerns, and y'all hear us out. Unlike all the other councilmen's, they rather your five minutes is up or argue it But let's give the city of Lafayette what it needs, and that's a mayor and an elected chief position. Let's start getting back some of those programs that was cut. Anyhow, that 2% pay increase was already approved, was already put out there since last year. But let's start giving back some of those programs that was cut, because they really need it, they really need it, from the park ranges to the rec centers to everything that's needed. And I would ask that our government start getting involved with the community. Start coming to the neighborhoods, talking with the community.
Your time is up, sir.
Next speaker, Will Tealy, followed by the final speaker, Tara Fogelman.
Hello, my name is Will Tealy. I live in City District 2. Councilman Andy Nakan represents me, so thank you to him and thank you to everyone on the city council. I would like to voice, I would like to voice my support in favor of the early voting site that was recently implemented at the MLK Center at 309 Cora Street. Early voting has begun in the state of Louisiana, and in Lafayette Parish, our early voting numbers are blowing up, even compared to the presidential election four years ago. People are early voting in record numbers. For the three days that have occurred so far, Friday, October 16th, and then Saturday, October 17th, and Monday, October 19th, each of the three voting locations, downtown, the MLK Center, and the East Library location near, in Youngsville, are all hovering at about 1,000 voters each day. So over the three-day period, the downtown center has had 3,749 voters, the MLK Center has had 2,922 voters, and the East Library has had 4,246 voters. All are really impressive. I feel that I come to a lot of council meetings and complain about a lot of issues, but this is something where I wanted to compliment the city council and the parish council on. Installing these two new early voting sites at the East Library in Youngsville and the MLK Center on the north side is so important. These voting sites are being utilized in huge numbers. And what, but what I would like to say is that I don't think there's any going back from this. I think the people are going to expect these three early voting centers for all elections going forward. It's my understanding that the East Library voting site is a permanent early voting site, because there's a deal with the city of Broussard and Youngsville, who are paying for the early voting site for two years, and then the parish council is going to vote for it after that. I would like to see a similar deal for the MLK Center, for the city of Lafayette council pay, help pay for it to keep it operating as an early voting site for all elections into perpetuity, not just as a temporary early voting site for this one election. The people on the north side represent a suppressed voting block of our parish, struggles with transportation, or getting time off work, or just feeling disenfranchised from the whole voting process, keeps many of our north side residents home on election night, and that is not right, that is a tragedy. But with this early, this new early voting site, it has exploded with excitement for voting and the democratic process on that side of town. We have to keep up this work. Just looking at the first few couple days of early voting, the proportion of black votes in the 2020 early voting election has rivaled that of the 2008 presidential election, where Barack Obama was elected the first African-American president. These are terrific numbers. Please keep the MLK early voting site open into perpetuity, so as long as there is an early voting site at the East Library, serving mostly white communities, we must, without question, also have an early voting site on the north side servicing our black communities. And I would like to remind everyone that early voting is on now and goes through October 27th. It excludes Sunday, October 18th and Sunday, October 25th, and the times are from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tealy.
Final speaker, Tara Fogelman.
Good evening, Tara Fogelman, Unity 7, Village 337. Mr. Lozor, it's my city council member. I had an experience the other day with a 15-year-old teenager who is severely out of control with the behavior, a young girl. Her mother has tried everything she could possibly think of, counseling, consequences, the home is a stable home, she's just really trying to go down the wrong path. And in talking with the police, the city police, because they had to be called, what I realized is, even in the last 13, 14 years, the city of Lafayette has not changed. Speaking from experience, as a mother, my firstborn child, I was in that same situation as the mother the other evening. And what has not changed in the city of Lafayette is the following. When you call the police because your child is violent and you simply need help, city police hands are tied. There's no old-fashioned put them, take them for a tour at the jail, or take them for a tour juvenile detention, so they can see the reality of what they're really facing. City police are telling me that they can only send to juvenile detention murderers and rapists, that they actually stopped two teenagers in a stolen car, both with guns and one with an attempted murder charge over him, and juvenile would not take them. There is no help for our teenagers, and then we wonder why our young adults are shooting in the park. Y'all talk about pay raises, 2% here, $10 million there, cost of living, the mayor needs, you know, people in his office closer to him to get pay raises, but yet we don't invest in our youth in this city. Now, that is a huge problem for me, considering that I stand against gun violence. But if our city can't be a different city when it comes to the problems of our children and our teenagers, our city is just going to get worse, it's going to be full of violence. I encourage y'all to think about if you would be in that situation needing help for your child, and the police know and tell you their hands are tied, and you just don't know what to do, because if you lay hands on them the wrong way, then you have CPS in your life. And then you have the judges who just aren't very fair either whenever it comes to that type of discipline. I also want to say publicly, you know, I did read that report that the attorneys for Trayfer Palera released. It's kind of nice to know, I'm going to look at the mayor, it's kind of nice to know that those officers are getting paid right now, sitting at home, but yet in that police footage, they say that you can hear officers there using their own personal knives drawn out and told to leave them at the crime scene. But they're home getting paid after they killed my young black brother, so justice for Trayfer Palera. I'd also like to know who is responsible for unlocking the gates at Moore Park, turning on the lights and the electricity. We come here in groups and numbers, y'all now passed something to suppress our voices for public comments, but we come here sometimes in droves, and we warn y'all, the police on the north side of town, no one listened, Trayfer got murdered. Told y'all how important park police was, they're not around. We lost two more young black men, what, early Friday morning? So who's responsible for turning on the electricity, turning on the lights, unlocking the gate? Because just like the shooter that killed these two men, young men, and shot the other two individuals, they have blood on their hands also. So does Lafayette Consolidated Government, because we warned y'all of the importance. Y'all have a good evening.
No other speakers, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So let's move on to resolutions. This is a public hearing, and speaker sheets are available for anyone wishing to address the council. The five-minute rule does apply. Chairman, please read item number six.
City Resolution 34, 2020, a resolution of the Lafayette City Council approving the appointment of Gregory A. Labey as alternate director to the Louisiana Energy and Power Authority Board of Directors.
Motion by Ms. Ebert, second by Ms. Danny Nakan, in a council discussion. I see there's none, okay, let's call for vote to adopt this resolution.
District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. City Resolution 35, 2020, a resolution of the Lafayette City Council, providing for the construction of sewer system improvements within a portion of Consolidated Sewage District of the city of Lafayette, state of Louisiana, in a manner provided by Subport 8, Port 2, Chapter 9 of Title 33 of the Louisiana Revised Statutes of 1950, Green Farm Road area.
Motion and second, motion by Ms. Nanette Cook, second by Ms. Ebert, council discussion. See, there's none, any public comments?
No, sir.
Call for the vote to adopt this resolution.
District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 1?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. City Resolution 36, 2020, a resolution of the Lafayette City Council affirming the selection of funding recipients for the 2020-2021 External Agencies Funding Program.
Motion by Ms. Danny Nakan, second by Ms. Liz Ebert, council discussion. See, there's none, Ms. Williams, public comments?
We did have one citizen who did not wish to speak, but he supports the resolution.
Okay, vote for the council to adopt this resolution.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. City Resolution 37, 2020, a resolution of the Lafayette City Council directing the Lafayette city parish attorney to withdraw the city of Lafayette as plaintiff in an unauthorized lawsuit against the city of Lafayette's special counsel.
Motion and second, motion by Ms. Danny Nakan, second by Ms. Nanette Cook. Council discussion, I see Mr. Andy Nakan. Yes.
Mr. Logan, are you handling this lawsuit? Are you actually representing the city of Lafayette in this lawsuit?
The Assistant City Attorney, Mr. Frank Newner, and his law firm are handling this lawsuit.
Mr. Newner, you, I assume, Mr. Frank Newner?
Yes, sir.
Could you address to this lawsuit, sir, what you see involved in this, please?
Well, we researched it, it's laid out, it's laid out very well in the lawsuit that we filed, because we...
Do you want to take it off your mask? Sure. Thank you.
It's a lot easier to hear you, sir, thank you.
Sure. We researched the issue, and there's no authority for the city council independently to hire its own attorney. The city council is not a juridical body. That was decided by the Third Circuit Court of Appeals in a case involving former mayor Bowen. The city council has to act in tandem with the parish council, much like the Senate and the House of Representatives in Washington, neither one can pass a law without the other. When it comes to the city parish attorney and the mayor president, they, they represent the parish and the city both, and both councils have to come together, as they did in this case, to pass a budget and agree, and that's the way it's supposed to work. In this case, what we understand from the ordinance that was passed, there's a dispute with what Mr. Esq. is the attorney designated by Mr. Logan's office to represent the city council with advice he gave, but we have no idea what the dispute's about. We consulted with an ethics expert, a professor in New Orleans at the law school, Dane Cialino, and he saw no conflict. So it looks like, you know, the city council's looking for a problem to find a solution for, rather than having a problem. And so the parish charter, city parish charter, is very clear that both bodies, city council, parish council, have to work together when it's a joint issue, and the city parish attorney...
Basically legally, even though we're two separate bodies, operating as far as the parish council, city council, legally we're tied together under charter, under one attorney, representing the parish government.
That's correct. The charter is the law that decides how the, how this city parish government works, and how the city council works, and the parish council. And the charter, while it separated the councils, it didn't separate the mayor president's office, and the mayor president serves for both, the city parish attorney serves for both. And it's, you know, just because you don't like the advice that you're getting, it doesn't mean you can go hire a lawyer from Baton Rouge or from wherever to come in and give you different advice. Under the charter agreement, there's no provision for that.
Are you seeing that a conflict is being created when we do this? Is this the whole point behind this?
Well, it certainly could create conflict, but more importantly, the charter is very clear that Mr. Logan is a chief legal officer for the city parish, for the city and for the parish, and there's no authority for the city council, under this charter that we all operate under, for the city or for the parish to go hire their own lawyer to get into a dispute with one body or the other.
In the lawsuit, it says that Ms. Bassam Basir is usurping the authority of the city parish attorney. What provision supports that, do you think, in this, in this, in the charter?
Charter Section 3-09A says the city parish attorney is the head of the legal department. He shall serve as the chief legal advisor of the city council and other departments. The legal department is under the direction and supervision of the mayor president. That's Charter Section 4-01 and Section 4-03. The mayor president appoints and removes the city parish attorney. That's Section 3-09A2 and 4-01A. The charter expressly prohibits the council from removing, directing, or supervising the city parish attorney, except, as specifically provided in the charter, neither the city council nor parish council nor any of their members shall remove, direct, supervise any administrative officers or employees whom the mayor president or any subordinates of the mayor president are empowered to appoint. In this case, that's Mr. Logan. You know, the mayor president's expressly vested with the power to appoint, and then in this case, both councils, the city and the parish council unanimously approve Mr. Logan, and the only one who can fire Mr. Logan is Mr. Gilery over here.
Right, okay. I think that's all I have, Mr. Newner, for right now, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I specifically remember that, that is read in the charter, I just didn't, wasn't aware that you would be coming as well, that the Home Rule Charter that was passed in 2018, that it says that the council has the authority, again, has the authority, the city council has the authority to hire a special counsel for the city. If you, Mr. Logan also read that a couple of council meetings ago, that, that, excuse me, sir, that we have the authority to hire a city council, is in the charter. Then again, Mr. Logan, I have a question for you, sir.
Can I address that, Mr.?
Let me, Mr. Logan, first, then you can address that. You are the director and work for the mayor president, the parish council, and the city council. My question to you is that, who's requesting that you take this action? Because you work for three different, I understand you work for three different entities, the city council, the parish council, which is here, they just got dismissed, and you work for administration. So who is directing you to take this action?
It's not three separate entities. The councils are not entities, and that's where we differ. Under the charter, I represent the city council, the parish council, and the executive branch or the administrative branch at the direction of Mr. Gilery, the mayor president. So I am duty-bound, as I communicate to you in email, to defend the provisions of the charter, and I believe the action of hiring the special counsel is in direct violation of the charter. You and I disagree.
We do.
A lot of people disagree, okay? But at least we can agree to disagree.
Right, right, right.
So it was time to send it to the court and let a neutral, third party decide. Instead of you and I arguing and never coming around, it was time, because I... It was time, because I believe the Home Rule Charter provides one thing, you believe it provides something else, and I'm duty-bound with Mr. Gilery's approval to defend this charter.
Sure, sure, and that, I understand, I appreciate your comments again, but it has been said that special legal counsel will cost. We know that it's gonna cost, right? I think this is all about it as well. But LCG attorneys have spent more money on legal attorneys than we have, than we have. We haven't spent a dime yet on the special counsel we just hired out of Baton Rouge. But this office that you're working for has spent more money than we have spent so far. I am making a public request for all expenses inquired by LCG, by all city parish attorneys with reference to research, opinions, filings, memos, et cetera, with reference to special counsel. So I want a public request on that.
Okay.
That's what I'm asking for.
Yes, sir.
Sir, you had a question, I mean, you had something you wanted to respond to?
I think Mr. Logan answered the question that you had asked of me, I thought.
Okay. Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I, I want to offer up an amendment, actually, to this resolution, because I am just concerned, again, about the conflict. I mean, if you represent the city parish, you're our city parish attorney, but you're bringing a suit against an action that we, as the city, did, because we, and we apparently disagree with your actions, but we're not able to hire someone to represent us. I just, I just find it interesting that we find ourselves in this, excuse me, in this loop, that we keep going around and around, so, and I understand, you know, let's take it to the courts, that's fine. I just feel like we are, we're spending unnecessary money when I, my interpretation in the charter is, as well as Mr. Lewis, is that we are able to hire our own counsel, you know, for special needs in terms of issues that we maybe would like to have our own counsel. And so I guess, you know, if you were to, you're able to appoint, correct? You pick your attorneys that you want to represent the city parish?
Correct.
Correct? Why can't you let us pick one that we want, that can, you know, still be under you, but would be one that we feel is one that is representing us? I mean, is that too much for us to ask for?
I actually suggested that at one of the first meetings. I actually suggested if, under the framework of the legal department in the Home Rule Charter, that I would appoint an assistant, and...
But you're missing my point. You will appoint. We would like to pick one that we would feel more comfortable with.
Well, and is what I was saying, is if you guys picked one and suggested one at the time, is what I was saying, I'm sorry, Mr. Lewis, but that's what I suggested, that the special counsel, but this would not be the need of the special counsel. A special counsel provision is when we need special counsel that's outside of our normal fee structure, such as bond counsel or utility counsel, LUS Fiber Council. We normally, Lafayette Public Service Commission, I mean, excuse me, Louisiana Public Service Commission, we normally come to the council and appoint those. I haven't had to do that. I'm about to have to do that for fiber. So that was suggesting, suggested, go through the framework. Early on, I made the commitment to give y'all, Paul Aibert, if that's who, excuse me, Paul Esq., excuse me, Mr. Esq., and everyone seemed happy with that. And I still have not seen the opinion that is referenced time and time again as an egregious opinion or any opinion that creates a conflict or does not let the city manage its money. I hadn't seen it. I'm, I'm still waiting for it. So anyway, we don't have the basis. It's, I don't want to argue with you, Ms. Cook, but that, that was a way that this could have been handled, and it was suggested early on.
And I appreciate that, and nothing against Paul Esq., Paul Aibert, any of them. But again, I guess it's a matter of you serving two masters in terms of, you know, when we have a conflict, and this particular attorney that is appointed by you is, is under you, and you control that person, and that's, and that's your job. I'm not suggesting that you're not doing what you're supposed to be doing, but we just don't maybe feel like we're getting the representation that we need because of that conflict from time to time. And, and I appreciate the fact that the special counsel needs that you're suggesting, you know, you ran the list on, but is that in the charter? I don't...
Yes.
Okay, I didn't see that in that particular clause where we're reading for special counsel. It goes on further to elaborate on exactly the kinds of times that it only applies?
No, it does not elaborate, but that is what that provision has been interpreted to mean.
I have, Ms. Cook, I have the exact provision here, if you want me to read it into the record.
I trust you, that's okay.
It just says you can get specialized counsel, you know, it doesn't say bond or tax, but it says the charter is intended to ensure that administration does hire attorneys for specialized areas outside of the normal scope of the city parish attorney's duties, but it, that's, that's when the council can hire its own attorney, but not for general legal advices, the conclusion that we came to when we researched this.
Okay, well, again, we're, I guess we're just gonna agree to disagree at this point on how to handle this, and, and, and I, you know, again, I respect both of you, I respect your opinion, I just don't feel like, you know, I feel like we just felt like we needed someone that we could call our, our own attorney without a conflict on certain issues. And so that's kind of how we came to this resolution, or this, this, actually, not this resolution, this, this hiring, so. I do have a couple of amendments that I wanted to put into the resolution, I'm not sure if at this time we do that, or... Yeah, that's fine.
Ms. Aibert?
Thank you. So I think the important word that's missing from this whole conversation is we are not looking to hire our own attorney for the next four years. We're not. We know that's not on the charter. What we are trying to do is hire an attorney for a specific purpose, which is allowed in the charter. It is allowed there for one specific purpose. That's it. We're not saying we want someone for the next four years. And I feel like that's the really important word that's missing here. It says it in the charter that we can do so. It's not your opinion, it is there in the charter, Section 4-03E. And back in April, we had this very discussion, Mr. Logan, about what do we do whenever there's a disagreement? And you said we should hire our own counsel on a specific issue. You said that. And I think for me, the other question is, who's paying for this attorney? Is the City of Lafayette taxpayers paying for our city parish attorney to sue because the city council wants their own attorney? No, they should not be paying for that. It is clear as day in this charter, is the parish council gonna pay for that? They don't have money, they're going to the voters for a tax. They are broke. They can, and are they gonna want to pay? Is the parish council gonna want to pay to sue the city? No. This is enough, and I'm not done.
Sorry.
The point is, is that I, I'm so frustrated that I'm seeing this administration, or you, or you acting on behalf of the administration, or somebody, working so hard to fight against something that we are saying we want. You don't need to understand why we want it. We are saying, we had a majority, we had a majority that said we wanted this, and it says in the charter we can do it for a specific issue. I don't want to get into a debate right here, because we've had enough, we've wasted enough time. So I'm open to any amendments, but I feel like it is clear as day that there's not an issue here, and that's all I have, thank you.
See, Andy want to say something? Mr. Nockan?
I just heard a comment about you serving two masters, Mr. Logan, and it's my impression that basically you serve one master, the charter. Would that be correct in that statement?
That's correct, and that's how the courts have held in the past, not just with Lafayette Consolidated Government, but under the charter, yes.
And I'm curious as to the hiring of our own city attorney, what was the specific item that they hired this attorney for? Do you have any ideas, sir?
I've read three different things, and I don't know which one's correct.
So at this point, we don't know of any one specific thing this attorney was hired for. As stated in the charter, we're supposed to hire for one specific thing. So that confuses me also. Thank you, Mr. Logan.
Okay, Ms. Cook?
Okay, I have a couple of amendments that I want to add to this resolution. The first one would be, and I don't know exactly, V., do I read? You want me to read the whole?
Yes, because it's coming from the floor, so, and they're not familiar with your amendment, so you need to present your amendment.
I think you've all gotten a copy.
Yes.
Where it says, see Exhibit 1, this would be Exhibit 1, which reads, "The Louisiana State Bar Association, in its Practices Aid Guide, describes its rules of conduct related to conflicts of interest, provides pertinent part. A, conflicts may arise from directly adverse representation, or where the representation of a client is materially limited as a result of the lawyer's other responsibilities or interests. B, a direct adverse conflict arises when an attorney is called upon to represent one client against another client. C, a lawyer cannot represent two opposing parties in the same litigation. D, moreover, a lawyer may not act as an advocate in one matter against a client the lawyer currently represents or previously represented in some other matter. And E, even when there is no directly adverse conflict, a conflict of interest may nevertheless exist if there is a significant risk that the lawyer's representation may be materially limited as a result of the lawyer's responsibility to other clients, to third persons, or entities, or as a result of the lawyer's own personal interest." That would be Exhibit A. And then further down, I have an amendment to add to Section 4 below. If you turn the page, you'll see Section 4. And I said, "Because of the dilemma in which the City of Lafayette finds itself without the aid and advice of independent legal counsel, Councilman Pat Lewis is hereby duly authorized and directed to seek the advice and guidance of the Louisiana State Bar Association, the Louisiana Attorney Disciplinary Board, and/or the Office of Disciplinary Counsel with respect to the application and enforcement of the rules of professional conduct in the circumstances." I'd like to add those two things to the resolution.
So you're making the motion?
I'm making the, well, I can't, can I make?
Yeah.
Oh, I can make the motion, yes, sorry. I'd like to make the motion, yes.
So...
Because there's a motion by Ms. Cook and second by Ms. Liz Aibert.
To amend.
For to amend.
And we have two speakers, Jared U. Banks, do you want to, and, okay, and Will Tealy, you guys are past, okay. So we have no speakers, so you can move forward with voting on the amendment, if there are no other question, or comment, should I say?
Any more comments from the council? Okay? Call for vote for the amendment.
District four?
Yes.
District five? District one?
Yes.
District two?
No.
District three?
Yes.
Motion to amend is approved.
Now we could move to comments on the resolution as...
Comments on the resolution?
Jared U. Banks, first speaker, followed by the final speaker, Will Tealy.
Good evening, Jared U. Banks, in Mr. Andy Nockan's district. I'm gonna keep this brief, I heard most of what I wanted to say and some really salient points from the council tonight, and I'm glad to hear it, but I have to echo some of the frustration. This is ridiculous, the amount of time and money we're going to waste fighting ourselves. Furthermore, it's disrespectful to you guys, it's disrespectful to everyone you represent, and it ignores the pretty plain English of the charter, as well as common sense. I'm not a lawyer, but you guys, it sounds like you're getting some pretty spurious, spurious advice, so I'm glad you're looking into getting one. You guys aren't a joint legislative body, you are sometimes, but not exclusively. You're able to pass laws independently, unlike the House and the Senate. And the, like, charter makes no bones about whether or not an individual counsel can hire it. It says, and I'm not gonna like bore you with all of 403E, which you guys have clearly referenced and read, but the parish, the city council, the parish council, or both, depending on the subject matter, in accordance with pertinent provisions of the charter, you guys individually have the right to, it doesn't need to be a joint action. The thing that really gets to me is, what is the argument against you doing so? Either the administration has an agenda that precludes you having legal counsel, which sounds a little bit like dark and sinister, or they don't want you spending money on an independent counsel. But at what point is that argument blown out of water, when we're paying our current counsel hours over time to go into a court case that the taxpayers are gonna end up paying regardless of how this, like, shakes out? This, it's just ridiculous to me. We're definitely not saving money here, that's clear to everyone. Additionally, our fairly new administration has a history of wasting our money, fighting ourselves, and resorting to this legal maneuvering. They didn't want to support the EDDs, which opened it up to lawsuits, and you can't tell me that doesn't encourage those lawsuits, which thankfully ended because people wanted to stop wasting money on it on the other side. Additionally, I definitely think an audit in the LUS, LUS Fiber case was necessary, but at what point do we stop pursuing hurting ourselves with the LPUA and after the, not the LPUA, but the Utility Board, and after the DA says, "All right, fix your stuff internally", at this point, you're just hurting yourself. This is another situation. Why does the administration just want to hobble ourselves? I, I don't think there's an answer to it that's clear to us, so I'm glad you guys are doing this, and thank you so much. Good night.
Will Tealy? And Mr. Chair, there was a court submitted after the discussion began, so if you would like to allow the speakers, it's up to you.
Okay, sure.
Hello, my name is Will Tealy, I live in City District 2. Councilman Andy Nockan represents me, so thank you to him, and thank you to everyone on the city council. Before I start with my remarks, I would just like to point out that at every single meeting that this was discussed, whether it was the meeting to hire the special counsel, or the meeting to override the mayor's veto about hiring the special counsel, or this meeting about taking our name off the lawsuit to sue ourselves, at every single one of these meetings, not one single citizen spoke up defending the city parish attorney's viewpoint on the matter. I would like to voice my support in favor of the resolution to instruct the city parish attorney to not list the City of Lafayette as a plaintiff against the special legal counsel that the city council hired. Earlier this year, at a city council meeting, the city parish attorney interrupted Mayor President Gilery and corrected his incorrect assertion that the mayor president is a co-equal branch of counts, pro-equal, co-equal branch of government to the council. According to the Home Rule Charter, and the mayor, the city parish attorney said this, "According to our Home Rule Charter, the city council sits above the mayor president." So I ask, where does the city parish attorney sit in this hierarchy? Does the city parish attorney sit above, say, the city council? Now, I'm not a lawyer, but if according to our own city parish attorney, the mayor president doesn't sit above the city council, then my guess is that the city parish attorney certainly doesn't sit above the council, especially considering that unlike the council and the mayor president, the city parish attorney is not elected by the people. Therefore, the question is begged, if the city council sits above the mayor president and the city parish attorney, then where does a veto-proof supermajority, four to one ordinance rank? Because the ordinance that hired the city's special legal counsel was passed with a veto-proof four votes from the five-person city council. I would think that this would sit above all else, as some of the most respected authority one could ask for, second only to maybe an actual vote of the citizens of the City of Lafayette. So if the appointed city parish attorney disagrees with a supermajority veto-proof city council, who should be honored? I think the answer is clear. To put it one way, with four out of five city councilmen and councilwomen voting in favor of the city's special legal counsel, that correlates to the will of 80% of our city populace wanting this special legal counsel. The idea that one appointed man could try to render the collective will of 80% of the City of Lafayette as null and void is absurd, it's laughable. Furthermore, the legal argument that the city parish attorney offers up is a legal paradox. If the city parish attorney refuses to defend the actions of the city council, then by his own argument, how is the city council suppo- He siphons up city tax dollars and then actively bullies, harasses, and nullifies the will and desires of the city he's sworn to serve. At the meeting where the city council approved the special counsel, the city parish attorney threatened the city council. He claimed that they could be sued personally for simply trying to act in their constituents' best interests. Mr. Guillory, you claim to be a fiscal conservative who wants to slash wasteful government spending. Well then, please turn your efforts to your very own city parish attorney. Please stop this war on the city of Lafayette. Please remove the city of Lafayette's good name from this absurd and unauthorized lawsuit. Thank you.
Final speaker, Keith Falk.
As opposed to the comment that was made earlier about previous Mayor Kenny Bowen, that was under the former Lafayette City Government Charter. So when the Home Rule Charter was amended and rewrote and consolidated the government, that charter was no longer in effect. But I want to go here. As to the city parish attorney suing the city council, this should open the city council eyes. It's time. It's time to fix this charter. It's time to give full power to the city. It's time to give the city that full power, because there's no winning. When people that's supposed to work with this council is suing this council, how does that look to the public? Ever since this new charter took place, this city been doomed, and it's going to go down and down and down and down. The trust in the government is not there. How can you expect to go in the community and tell the citizens to obey the law when legal cannot obey the law? Cannot obey a Home Rule Charter that he should have read front to back? Because the charter does give the city council power to have their own legal counsel. But it's just a matter of changing the charter, amending the charter, amending the charter. We got to get rid of this city parish stuff. It been brought up to defeat the city. And now today is still defeating the city. It's in history. It's in the research. I'm embarrassed to say I'm a registered voter and a taxpaying citizen of the city and parish of Lafayette. I'm embarrassed by the way this government continues to operate. When a talk in the office or a talk in the chambers or a talk on the council cannot resolve legal dispute, it ain't good. And ain't nothing good going to come out of this new charter. You going to have more disagreements? And by the time y'all leave office, y'all going to have less respect for one another behind this charter. Now, Ms. Abert said earlier, the parish is not paying for it because they broke. So who is paying for it? If this thing go to court, who is paying for it? The taxpaying citizens of Lafayette. Well, how would you like it if every citizen decided to barcot the city of Lafayette and move out of town? How would this government continue to operate? So remember, remember from the mayor president to Councilman Nakhan to everybody that works in this government, everybody that has a control and a say in this government, remember who tax dollars continue to operate this government? And it's the people y'all call the minority. We are not the minority. We are the majority. Because our tax dollars, our tax dollars is paying for this boat to continue to operate. Y'all have allowed this new charter to make a mockery of this government. A mockery of this government. Since when legal is over the council? Never.
No other speakers, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Let's move along. I need a vote from the council to adopt the resolution as amended.
District 4?
Yes.
District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
No.
District 3?
Yes.
Motion to adopt as amended is approved.
Thank you. Let's move along. I need a vote from the council to adopt the resolution as amended.
District 4?
Yes.
District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
No.
District 3?
Yes.
Motion to adopt as amended is approved.
Thank you. Let's move along. Reports and our discussion items. Chairman, please read number 10.
LUS Audit Update.
Steve Oats, Assistant City Parish Attorney. I think this started with your call to me, Ms. Cook.
Excuse me, Mr., I need to read you the floor to Ms. Cook.
No, I'm good. I just want to say welcome.
Yes.
Thank you.
We'll go ahead and give yours.
Steve Oats, Assistant City Parish Attorney. Under the prior administration, this administration, our firm's been working on the LUS audit. I have some answers to the questions that you forwarded, and Ms. Abert, you forwarded some questions, and I'll try to hit the questions and stop me along the way. You asked, the first overarching question is, what is the status of the PSC audit with the, with currently? Most of you know that this audit started under the prior administration, dealing with the sewer lift stations, the $1.8 million that was paid. The reason we go to an audit at the Public Service Commission is because there's what's called the Fair Competition Act, where it prevents us from cross-subsidizing fiber by our other utilities. Through that audit, and that audit was almost complete, in fact, the administration was giving its comments about the improvements we were being, we were making to, you know, y'all had split the directors, you know, they were establishing policies for contracts between the two, all the management responses. And about the time that our management responses were, responses were being finished, the mayor president asked us to look into the power outage monitoring system, about $1 million per year, about $8 million. And when we interviewed the first two people, they both said that they were going to recommend that be removed from your next budget. And that started the investigation of the power outage monitoring system that then led, you know, through the self-reporting of that to the Public Service Commission by the prior administration. And through discussions during that process, there was a schedule of all the other affiliated transactions between the Public Service, between LUS and LUS Fiber, and we were asked to look into all of that as well. Y'all all know the, other than Mr. Nakhan, who was serving, that wasn't serving, that was self-reported under the prior administration. What the Public Service Commission is doing now is they've asked us whether we want to combine them. The prior administration thought that was a good idea. The current administration felt that that's a good idea as well. The idea that the new council, the new administration taking over, all of those issues that had been looked into, and they totaled a lot of money, somewhere between 10 and 20 million, and those improvements have been, been made along the way to include that in the Public Service Commission audit, to just finish it all at once. We've received requests for additional information from the Public Service Commission on those, and, and they're going to be combined into one and resolved. The time, some of you asked, are they going to opine? Is the Public Service Commission going to give us an answer on whether the charges were appropriate or not, whether they violated the Fair Competition Act? Yes, they would. But this, the past administration, this administration has not stopped. You know, all the things that we discovered have been, plans have been put in place. As you know, you separated the two directors. We, the attest auditor, you know, every year, there is a need for an auditor to attest that we comply with the Fair Competition Act. We've changed the attest auditor. We've split legal counsel. You know, there's not the same legal counsel anymore representing fiber and the Public Service, and the LUS. There's even an RFP. I don't know what the, where y'all are in the process to pick a new engineer of record. You know, so along with that and the changes that are being made, the, you know, our response, much like the first one, is to respond with the things we've discovered to fix them. And they're well underway with the leadership of little Duon, Jeff Stewart, in making those improvements. The next question, and so we expect with it being combined, and understand, when the Public Service Commission just looked at the first issue of the sewer lift stations, it took them more than a year before they came back to us for our management responses. It has a docket number. It's like a litigated matter, but we are working cooperatively with them. And all the, the items that have been found and previously reported to you with PowerPoints are all being corrected. But they do add up to a lot of, a lot of money. The lift station was $1.8 million. The power outage monitoring system was over $8 million. It has been stopped as of your last budget with the affiliated transactions, and there, you have a big report that's previously been provided with the charges for things that weren't necessary and all that, that all of those, you know, you have two different department heads, they're working through it. I think, I don't want to steal, I don't know if Mr. Duon's here, any thunder, but I think you're going to see, you know, an LUS that is prospering. They've, just with those items that you've already identified, it's over $2 million of savings to LUS, LUS customers. It's, we all know that LUS is one of our tremendous assets, and I think you'll see from these efforts tremendous improvements. But to answer your question, we can't speed the Public Service Commission up. We are providing information to them, much like with, when you self-report something, we don't just sit back and wait for them to tell us what was right or wrong or what we should do. And those improvements are underway. How long would it take? I asked Larry Moreno, who is actually handling the docket work with the Public Service Commission, but Count, Chairman Mike Francis has told his staff he wanted a little more information, but then we hope to resolve things relatively quickly. But again, it's at their pace, not ours. So that was the first overarching question. What's the status of that? And I have some more sub-questions y'all have each asked.
Can I? Oh, I'm on, okay. When was the last time we actually did self-reporting? What's the most recent self-reporting information we gave? Because I know that was during Robideau's last administration.
Correct. It was, it was the first one before Mr. Hugelval left with the lift station. Then there was the one about the power outage monitoring system. And then right before the end of your last term, it was reported about the, all the affiliated transactions.
Okay, so that, so that's what I'm asking. So it was, it was before January 1st of 2020 was the last time? And so the Public Service Commission is still engaged?
They're going to, what we predict is they're going to combine them all into one proceeding, and we're going to go, they're going to, they're going to work through, they've hired a consultant, they always farm that out to look at it like they did with the first part of the audit. We will respond, defend, talk about all the improvements we made to put, you know, to resolve it and move forward with LUS.
They're kind of slow, though, huh? I mean, it'll be a year in January since we, you know, did any self-reporting, and we're still kind of waiting for feedback from them in terms of how we move forward?
No, it's not just feedback. It's for them.
I mean, not feedback, but, but yeah.
But yes, that, the first one was over a year. And I had the opportunity to talk with the chairman and indicate that we're anxious to get it wrapped up, but that's really handled at the staff level, you know, with their staff and their consultants. And again, when you're, they're our judge.
Yeah.
You know, we, but the important part is, much like anything, when a, when an organization, an institution finds problems, they deal with them, because that's what they want to see. They want to see that we're responsible, that we're complying with the, with the Fair Competition Act.
And that's what we've been doing, correct? I mean, we made the corrections and...
In fact, I'm, it, for another day, and I'd be happy to come by and brief you, and I'm sure, Mr. Duon, Jeff Stewart, I'm privy to a lot of the progress they're making, and I think you'll see a minimum of $2 million. And Larry, what was the best estimate today?
$2.2 million.
$2.2 million per year to the good for LUS by, you know, bringing good business practices to these, these items. Certainly, the big one was eliminating the power outage monitoring service, which, you know, you, back in August, not only our work, but the work, you know, when the new council came in, the new administration came in, you said, we want an independent, I mean, all due respect to the work that had already been done, we wanted an independent forensic examination of the situation. And you all have the report. It's a very thorough report. It came out August 12th, and it not only ratified the things that we found, but amplified some of them that, with regard to the, the problems.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt. Go ahead.
Sorry. The, the next question was, is this a witch hunt? Is this something that we should apologize for, you know, things, words to that effect? Respectfully, I'd say no, but I'm closer to it. I mean, I personally did a lot of the interviews. I mean, and it was very telling in the first two interviews I did, that the two interim directors said with palms, no, we recommend, we recommend we get rid of that. I mean, that was first day, first interviews, you know? That was on the backdrop to the lift stations where, you know, there was money being paid to fiber, and they weren't even being used. Then when we get into all of the other affiliated transactions, then they're clearly delineated, they're clearly delineated report. There were a lot of things that just were unnecessary. I want to be careful because, you know, we still have to go before the Public Service Commission. You know, we did have a long-term director leave in the middle of all those changes. His, he has since asserted that all of those charges for the power outage was, in fact, approved by attorneys. It was approved by auditors. It was approved by CPAs. That's simply not the case. You know, he was very cooperative, Terry Hugelval was. He met with me, with his attorney, criminal defense attorney, Mike Skinner, who we all know. But when we went through it, the only attorneys that were... He met with me, with his attorney, criminal defense attorney, Mike Skinner, who we all know. But when we went through it, the only attorneys that were involved at the beginning was Mike Abert. And Mike Abert, we documented his, what he said clearly, and what he said was, that is a service you can grant. That's a service you can provide. But he didn't say anything about how you would price it. The only other attorney who was involved is Randy Young. And you've heard Mr. Robideau's report on it, but I've talked to Mr. Young many times, and he said he never told Terry Hugelval how to price it. Now, it's odd, because when it was, when people alerted it, you know, our finance and budget staff in July of 11 said, wait a minute, I don't think we can charge this way. That day, Terry Hugelval forwarded it to Randy Young and asked him, look, I, I got people saying that we might not be able to do this, it's going to throw cold water on our attempts to get this revenue into fiber. When we talked to Randy Young, we got his bills. The day after, I think it was July 11, on July 12, he billed us for four hours researching that very question. Okay? Now, he says he didn't provide an answer. I have no reason to not believe him. But those are the only two attorneys who were involved, so when Mr. Hugelval says, the attorney said the pricing was okay, we didn't find that, nor did the forensic auditor find that. They said, well, the attest auditors, every year there's an audit that needs to be done to attest that LUS is complying with the Fair Competition Act, that was Burton Calder and Brian Jobear. Quite frankly, Terry Hugelval said, they told me it was okay in July of 2011. Burton Calder and Brian Jobear deny that, and that defies common sense, because, well, number one, they said it didn't happen. Number two, the meeting that they said happened, happened at a time where Burton Calder was at an all-day continuing education program. Then in 2013, when the 2012 year is being audited, the auditor asked about this power outage monitoring system. And they asked for all the documents about it. And all the documents were provided to the auditor, who supposedly had said it was okay in 2011. And the whole justification was based on power savings to customers. And unfortunately, while that sounds like a wonderful thing, the law says, if you're going to provide a service that you don't provide to the market at large, you're just going to provide it to your sister entity, all you can charge for it is the cost of delivering it. And the cost of delivering it is negligible, that was never considered. And if the auditors had said it was okay in 2011, as Terry Hugelval said, they wouldn't have had to ask the question in 2013. And when they got all the file materials, they would have probably said, well, this doesn't jive with what we told you in 2011. So your independent auditor concluded that that didn't happen. And that's clearly in the report. Now, the other assertion was that the Public Service Commission, they've audited every year, and they said it was okay. Well, the Public Service Commission never looked at that particular issue. But they generally approved the audit, and nobody raised a red flag, other than the internal people in finance and budget, who clearly threw the red flag back in July 11. And through our investigation, they said, we raised it every year. So the explanation that Terry Hugelval got attorneys, or the attest auditor, Burton Calder, to prove it, your report that you received in August 12, that's not true. And I, from my investigation, that's not true. And I'm, I'm glad that y'all authorized an independent forensic audit, so it wasn't just us. But when your work is confirmed by independent people from New Orleans, you know, it was, you know, it makes you feel you didn't miss anything, you know, because it's real important here. LUS is our most, one of our most important assets as a city of Lafayette. I mean, and so this isn't any attempt to tear it down, this is an attempt to get it right by the prior administration, by this council, this administration. And so it, it doesn't, it's not a witch hunt. It was always, I don't think an apology is warranted, but recent, I think the question was about, there were four employees put on administrative leave, okay? And know that that was done, because there were credible whistleblowers saying, somebody, I think somebody's destroying public records. Now, I've personally been involved in looking at that, personally interviewing people. And at the end of the day, while we had that credit, credible whistleblower, when we looked at it, the big numbers of emails that we thought were missing were in a, in a, in a different place, you know.
So they were there?
They were archived in a place that, quite frankly, we didn't see originally. And there were some public records destroyed, not the big numbers, but they were small numbers, unintentional, not a reason to discipline somebody. And at the same time, of, of those four people, we learned, I mean, two of them resigned during the course of my investigation, right in the middle of continued questioning, you know, one who was clearly downloading documents and giving them to an ex-employee, Terry Hugelval, after he was no longer here. Other, I mean, you'd really have to ask them, but others at the time when we're discovering that a lot of the, well, several of the personnel in budget and finance, they raised the issue about how the power outage monitoring was being charged. They didn't see an answer, and they raised it over and over again. And they saw themselves being blamed by an ex-director saying, I'm just an engineer, budget and finance are the, should have told me what we should have charged on the pricing. And two others who were interviewed, you never, in these type of world, clear somebody, but the things we were looking at, there was no problem. And, but it was a legitimate complaint by a credible whistleblower. So I, I don't think it's a witch hunt. I, I don't think it's ill-founded. I, at least I know for the actions that we did, and I think we did almost all of it, it was handled with respect and consideration for the employees, you know. The next question was, well, the DA, Keith Stutes issued a letter a couple of days before you got the audit report. And the district, I mean, y'all, y'all seen it, I think it got forwarded to everybody. And it basically said, I don't see any criminal activity. Two days later, you, we, we did receive the audit report, so in fairness, he didn't have all of that. But he had all of the materials that we had, we had done, all the interviews, provided. And I, I don't do criminal work, I'm not a prosecutor, but I think the question that is a legitimate question beside the somebody's apology is, did the DA really do an investigation? You know, when you look at that report, you look at our work, you look at what your independent auditor did, it doesn't look like there was a, a real investigation done by the district attorney's office. I mean, and we're talking about a DA's office in Keith Stutes, who ran for election on an anti-corruption platform. Y'all remember? You know, he was running against a prior DA on anti-corruption. You know, here we've got clear, credible information. I don't know whether it's criminal or not, that's what a district attorney does. And you've got an independent audit being done at the direction of the new administration. It, it just, I mean, you have an internal investigation, you have tons of material, you have an independent auditor, and we, we, the DA's opinion, I mean, I don't know if you looked at it, but it had bold print, I mean, it looked like almost a brief that a criminal defense lawyer would turn in, in, you know, defending a client, as opposed to truly investigating and getting to the bottom of it. A legitimate question, I think, would be, why wasn't it thoroughly investigated? Imagine you have your private company, and you think millions of dollars, not a hundred, a couple of thousand dollars, but some money, it hasn't been handled right, and you do what you're supposed to do. And government has to report things to the district attorney, it's required by law. We have to report it to the legislative auditor, that's the law. And they don't investigate it? You know, again, I didn't talk with Keith Stutes, but the impression I got was, they wanted us to investigate it ourselves, as opposed to the district attorney investigate it. So you got to ask why. Why, why isn't the district attorney looking into it with the, with the same scrutiny that the prior administration, this administration, and this council did, hiring its independent auditor? And I don't know the answer to that. He talked about, there was, just briefly about the merits, he said, the statute of limitations has passed, or it was too late to go and look at it? The sewer lift stations, that wasn't discontinued until 2017. The Palm stuff, we ju, the power outage monitoring system, over 8 million dollars? We just ended that in 2019. Said it wasn't intentional? That the auditor said we could do it, the lawyer said he could do it, and all that? That's been debunked. And, and again, he didn't have the benefit of the independent auditors. But the independent auditor clearly says that these things look intentional, that there were emails that he put in the report that he concluded was intentional. There were emails that concluded that he was even not telling the council about it, out of fear that what y'all would do with the money. And again, this is not easy for me to ask these questions. I mean, I, I consider Terry Hugelval a colleague. We went, we went to school together. Destruction of emails, it's a smaller number and all that. And let's not let that issue overshadow the million, tens of millions of dollars that we're talking about. But yes, we found the big number that we thought was missing, and it was archived in a different place, not in y'all's central system. You know, that's been fixed, y'all now have a central system for archiving. So hopefully, that mistake doesn't get made. And quite frankly, that was me. And I, I had to get it explained to me, because I don't understand about PST files and all kinds of archive filing and stuff like that. But we found it. And again, the email, the document description that we found was unintentional and small. He said the primary jurisdiction is the Public Service Commission. And that's true. And that's really where we're going to resolve it. But the question that people ask is, why isn't it being investigated? And again, I don't do criminal work, but I've never seen anything like that document that the DA sent. I don't know if he's ever done anything comparable in all of his years as a prosecutor. I'd be curious how much time they spent on the report versus the investigation. I'd be curious, did Mike Skinner provide information, the defense, the lawyer representative, did he provide information that's contained in that report? How much time, just how much time did you, I mean, so one of you asked a question of how much money did we spend on legal? And, you know, and the prior administration and the current administration, did that get to y'all? And I'm, considering the magnitude of what we were doing and what we dealt with under the power outage monitoring service, under Robideau is about 19,000, under Mr. Gillery is 40, 25. On the affiliated transactions, once that expanded, we spent about 23,000. Larry with, did most of that work. We did about $4,000 of support for the forensic review. And the PSC proceedings, spent about $20,000 under Robideau and under Gillery, 5,000. But that's going to go up, because we'll get into the meat of resolving and finishing the Public Service Commission.
So I came up with about just under 100, is that correct so far?
Correct. If, if, I'm not, you know, I don't do math in my head, but it's, it's, it's when you add them all together.
It's about 98 something, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Considering the magnitude, the tens of millions of dollars, the, you know, when you interview employees, you know, and in a serious manner, you know, you have to take special precautions and, so the... Were there any questions? You know, I, I got, I think they all got forwarded to me. Did anybody else have any that I didn't cover?
No, I mean, I think you covered all the questions I had sent in.
And I'm sorry to, you know...
I'm gonna let Liz, she may have something to...
None first, Steve.
Yeah, I just, I want to thank you for, yeah, for all the details. And I guess, I think, as a council, we would probably ask that you keep us updated on the Public Service Commission, you know, activity and what's happening. Because, I mean, I feel like you have, y'all have done a good job as far as cleaning and maybe moving forward and trying to get, you know, all, all the things that we discovered, and you've made, Lowell's made some great, you know, changes to the department. I, I thank you very much for that.
I think, I think y'all are going to be really proud as a council, as a city, you know, to the improvements. And it's, and it's a wonderful thing that we have fiber in, in our, in our city, you know.
I just would like to see us move forward.
Yep.
And I know we, we, you know, we're waiting for Pub-, for the Public Service Commission, who apparently moves very slow, but I guess I just, I feel like, you know, and, and my concern is any damage that we might be doing to the fiber, you know, reputation in the city and/or any kind of...
I, I think it's clear that the things that we found, they've been stopped.
Okay.
You know, and, and I think it's going to pay dividends for both. And the, the action that y'all did, while you have two separate directors, so they at least fight for each other's budget, that puts some natural things in protection, having different attorneys, new attest auditors who, you know, maybe were in the forest too long and didn't see the trees.
Yeah.
You know, I, I think everything that's happened under the prior administration and this administration, with the support of the council, has been very helping.
Okay, well, again, I thank you for coming with that information. I'm gonna let...
One quick. In, in what you were talking about here, it sounded like you...
Hold on, hold on, your mic's not on.
Thank you, Councilwoman Abert, I appreciate it. In your talk just now, you were basically indicating that most of the issues, decision-making, was done by the director at the time things were going down. Is there anybody else in that administration that be, could be complicit and involved in these decision-making? Do you see that in any of the reports you see, or anything investigation?
I, at this point, I would rather to answer that question, because it is pending in private with you, or in executive session, if you'd like to do it with the, the whole council.
That's fine. I understand, Mr. Stutes, that's fine.
And...
Then I withdraw the question.
But I, but I think we're to the bottom of it. I, I don't think there's going to be any other big, big revelation, an aha moment. I think, again, it was lengthy. I would, you know, it, it encapsulates a lot, but that audit report from...
It seems rather broad what was going on, it really does, so...
Well, but there, he's very specific, but that CRI, CPAs, the writing, I, I wasn't here the night he came, apparently, and presented. But if you haven't spent time with that, I think that really answers a lot of, a lot of questions.
Sure. We'll talk another time. Thank you, though. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you. So there's been a lot of discussion about LUS investigation. I think, for me, some things that I just want to get off my chest and clear the air, so bear with me, because it's pretty lengthy. The last two administrations have accused of LUS and LUS fiber's employees of misconduct and/or crimes, completely ignoring the... and/or crimes, completely ignoring the innocent until proven guilty due process. These administrations have caused pain, suffering, and unfairly damaged reputations of loyal employees. Within days of accusations of criminal misconduct, the administration knew that the emails were not missing, and did not take any steps to notify the district attorney, which had taken over the investigation, or apologized to employees for making these accusations, and immediately reinstated them. Upon learning that the DA saw no crimes to prosecute, the administration turned to the FBI, continuing the assault on LUS. Is there evidence that the FBI is even looking into this matter? Has anyone been interviewed? I personally contacted the FBI agent locally who's overseeing this. He could not, and they do not confirm or deny whether a docket is currently open, it's just standard procedure for these issues. At this point, other than the payments for services never connected to the sewer lift stations, we have received no ruling that any other payments violate the Fair Competition Act, or any indication that the PSC sees enough to open a new audit. Even if these payments, which involve two municipal entities with common interests, do violate that state law, the only duty of the administration is to self-report and let the Public Service Commission, PSC, do its job. I took the liberty to reach out to the PSC, and I'm told that they are waiting on LUS to respond to the staff report sent on June 4th, 2019. I'll say it again, the PSC contact I spoke with told me that they are still waiting for LUS to respond to the staff report sent June 4th, 2019, in reference to the audit of the lift stations in order to resolve that docket. More than a year now, I'd like to see this done. So, Ms. Veronica, make a note for me, that I'd like to find out when we are going to respond to the staff report sent on June 4th, 2019, so we can close this docket. With respect to the issues involving the outage monitoring system, there's, according to my conversation I had with the PSC, there is not a formal docket open. And until recently, PSC was never officially provided a copy of any audit reports from LUS or their council. Also, the PSC tells me they haven't received the two letters from the DA stating no charges will be persecuted. They do have an internal investigation to whether the circumstances surrounding the issue warrant a further audit. That review is ongoing, with the staff reviewing documents provided by LUS, including the recently provided audit findings. But no formal docket has been opened. Mr. Oates just mentioned earlier that the PSC suggested that we combine documents. That is a lie. Because again, that was my suggestion to the PSC, it was can we combine the documents to speed up this process? My contact at the PSC told me that cannot be done. Throughout this process, this administration has refused to be transparent with the city council, which is the sole legislative authority over LUS and LUS fiber. After realizing Terry Huvall's emails weren't actually missing, they did not admit to the city council until many months later. They waited weeks to reinstate two of the suspected LUS and LUS fiber employees, while providing no apology or making false accusations. Even after the DA sent letters clearly stating he saw no prosecutable crimes, this administration did not immediately provide that information to the city council. Also, why was the council not notified that the audit was sent to the FBI? I only found out, and we only found out, because of the attempt to involve the FBI after I emailed the administration and legal to express my disappointment about not receiving the DA's two letters. If my dates are correct, the administration had already received the first letter from the DA on August 10th, before the auditor presented to the council on August 18th. The night of the audit report, I specifically requested that the city council receive an opinion from the DA as soon as one is received, and even followed up with that request with an email that evening. Why was the DA's letter not discussed at that meeting? We all know that the DA, we all know from the DA's letters that there was no raid, and there was no missing emails, and that no one tried to cover up a crime, because there were no crimes. Now, Mr. Oates stood here and say that, did he even do, did our DA even do an investigation? If you read the letter, the DA goes into great detail about the investigation that he did, whether it was questioning the state police about the raid, looking through the emails, having conversations with people, work was done. But I'll allow District Attorney Keith Stutes' quote in this letter to speak for itself. Quote, "I am now even more convinced that your complaint continues to be driven by opinions and conclusions only that crimes have been committed, and those you accuse are guilty. The evidence, quote, 'received and reviewed, however, suggests the contrary.' I want to be clear here, it is inappropriate and is unforgivable that council was not notified that the DA sent these letters to the administration, saying he would take no action against these employees. We only received these letters because of a public records request submitted by media, and they sent it to the council as well, as professional courtesy." But here we are, and we still feel the need to take the matters to the FBI. Our priority should be ensuring qualified permanent leadership at both LUS and LUS fiber, and protecting the stability of both entities. We've now had interim leadership at both LUS and LUS fiber for more than two years, yet this administration hasn't started the process securing permanent leadership even after multiple requests from the city council. Meanwhile, the consulting engineer that we paid to advise us on how to run LUS has been telling us that our current interim interim director isn't qualified. This company has way more experience than any of us, and we are legally obligated to listen to their advice due to the covenants of LUS bonds. In fact, we violate these covenants, which include the heating advice of the consulting engineer, our bondholders have the right to demand that we rectify any wrongdoings. And it is my understanding that if we don't do so in a timely manner, they have the right to take over LUS and/or LUS fiber, rectify any issues themselves. We cannot afford to get anywhere close to that, taking that risk. This administration has falsely accused the consulting engineer of negligence with regards to those potentially illegal subsidies. Quite frankly, it's not the consulting engineer's job to decide if payments violate the Fair Competition Act. It's the PSC's who's currently reviewing this. The citizens of the city of Lafayette deserve better. Even if mistakes have been made in the past, we need to rectify. We cannot afford to continue to make unforced errors, especially at a time of such incredible economic uncertainty. The city, the administration and the city council need to be on the same page and working together to protect these important assets. That means that we need to get a qualified permanent leadership in place ASAP. And that means that we need to figure out how to resolve the investigation immediately, so we can focus on what's more important, so we can focus on more important issues in front of us, like how we are going to navigate the uncertain economic waters ahead, and how we are going to ensure that LUS fiber stays competitive and maintains its viability moving forward. So in closing, is this who we really are? We accuse people of crimes and don't admit we were wrong? Terry Huvall and those four LUS employees do deserve a public apology. I disagree with you, Mr. Oates. What, the last year and a half, they have been caught up in a political witch hunt? And those are my words, he quoted, political witch hunt, that should have never taken place. This is beyond politics. We signed up for that, they did not. This affects their professional and personal lives. We should be outraged by the way they were treated. And so if the administration or legal won't do it, I'm here to do so. As the past LPUA chairman and the current vice chairman of city council, I offer my apology to you and your families. And that's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Just if I...
One moment. So, Councilwoman, I know I do not have a prepared speech, but I did jot down a few Ten million dollars that we know of, I'm a ratepayer. Anyone here that lives in the city, you're a ratepayer, or in the unincorporated areas that are ratepayers of LUS. Ten million dollars, your dollars, our dollars, were unlawfully subsidized, were unlawfully spent. I'm not apologizing for reporting what I found to be unlawful. Now, what the district attorney does, he has discretion, I respect that. What the attorney general does, who's not involved in this, I respect that. What the investigatory agencies do, no control over that, I respect that. What the PSC does, I surely respect that. Apologize for ten million dollars of unlawful payments? No, I'm not, not going to apologize. Not going to apologize for the person that I find to be responsible for that, and neither should anyone else. To the four individuals that are very, that were working for LUS, what you failed to mention is two of them resigned in our investigation. Two of them were cleared, we appreciate that. For the two that remain, yes, I'm sorry you had to go through that. Your service to LUS is appreciated, your leadership is appreciated, your patience through the process is surely appreciated. To your family who has had to go through that, I am sorry they had to go through that. My duty is to the people. My duty as the mayor president and the executive branch, who the LUS director answers to, is to the ratepayers, is to our people. I'm not going to apologize. But you, ma'am, as the former chairman and vice chairman of the LPUA, who sits on a city council that you said is the sole legislative authority per our charter, which I agree with, you're apologizing to the wrong people. Your apology should be to these people in this audience, to the people of the city of Lafayette, and the ratepayers of LUS. That's where your apology should go to, respectfully. You know, if you spent as much time finding ways to defend unlawful activity, or at minimum, because it's not my job to define unlawful, improper activity, unlawful subsidies, if you spent as much time as you did defending that activity, as you did to find ways to fix the solution and to investigate, as the chairman of LPUA, as a sitting member of the city council, LUS would be in a better place. So I do look forward to the future. I do look forward to where we can put all this behind us. But our people deserve the truth. So I'm not apologizing for that.
Absolutely, thank you.
And I'm very, very thankful and honored to serve. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Move on.
If I could...
Very brief, very brief.
Very brief. The docket number is U as in uniform, three, four, eight, three, zero, so I don't know who you talked to that said there's no docket number. The email, the information you read that there had been nothing since that earlier date, that was true before the prior administration reported Power Outage Monitoring Service, because they, remember, they were only working on the prior audit, dealing with the lift stations. And it was almost finished when Power Outage Monitoring System came up, and it was self-reported by the prior administration. After that, we were instructed to investigate all other affiliate transactions. Both of those were self-reported to the Public Service Commission. We hope that they are all combined into one, as I explained, to report it, but the idea that there's no docket number, and there's been nothing done, there's been nothing done as far as action on their part, because they suspended it when we, when the prior administration reported the eight million dollars on pumps, and the report on all the affiliated transactions. They then learned, and we informed them, that this administration and this council approved and wanted an independent forensic evaluation, and they wanted us to wait and provide that. We have provided that when we received it in August. I can't speak to communication issues that you may have, and when I get into tough spots, usually communication issues can be a big part of anybody's problem, and I hope I didn't play any part in the communication problems.
Okay, we have to, we have to move on, sir.
Okay. But that's your docket number.
Mr. Oates, this conversation happened today with someone who's involved at the PSC. You and I can jump on a conference call tomorrow?
Yeah, I just...
No, you and I can jump on a conference call.
But it's not, it's not a lie.
You and I, I'm talking, I'm talking, you and I can jump on a call tomorrow with the PSC to talk about combining them? Because let's do it, let's get this done, let's move on.
We agree.
But you, let's call.
We agree on that.
Yes.
We agree on getting it done.
That's good, that's, that's, let's move on.
Finished with agreement.
Let's, let's move on. Chairman, please read item number eleven.
Update on filling director positions for LUS director, LUS fiber director, police chief, and parks and recreation director.
Ms. Cook, please.
Sorry, bringing it up, bringing this up again. I guess, Mayor, can I, oh, can I just direct this to you, and maybe just give me an update on, I mean, we kind of talked about the LUS fiber and LUS director...
Sure.
...with the last item. And I guess, I'm not sure if, you know, when we'd be planning on, we're waiting for the investigation to finish before we maybe move forward, which I'm not sure if that's really necessary, that we have to wait for that, but I guess, you know, maybe a timeframe on what you're thinking on those two positions, if you would?
Sure, I do, and our chief administrative officer has a very detailed answer. You know, when you put these things on the agenda, we do appreciate it, and we appreciate the value that it brings to our, to our people, not only the audience, but everybody listening, and that watches on replay. So, we do take it very serious. We have a presentation for you, but our, it's nothing on the TV or anything, but Sidra can present a little bit further. I can, I can tell you that we're not waiting, that's for sure, but it is a process, it is a process that deals with consulting engineers, as you know, council involvement with LUS fiber involves a national search firm, but Sidra will tell you about that. Police chief, we do, while I'd want to speed it up, I am tied to civil service rules, as you guys know. But again, she'll talk on this, and as the acting parks and recreation director, she definitely can, and can tell you a little bit more detail on the parks and rec situation. So, I'll turn it over to our CAO.
Sure. So, we have, we've been discussing LUS director, and specifically the record of engineer. As we have talked about here at this council body before the RFQ has been issued, we did receive two responses to the RFQ for the record of engineer. We do have an RFQ team that's going to be conducting interviews, and they will ultimately make a recommendation to professional services, which of course, as you know, is comprised, again, of council bodies, to approve the ultimate new record of engineer. Once that has happened, we will move forward with them, with the consulting engineer, to recruit, identify, and ultimately recommend a permanent director. That's for LUS.
Okay.
Did you have a question, does somebody have a question?
No, no, keep going.
Okay, so the timeline specifically for that is probably, you know, anywhere from January to June of 2021. Just, you know, to set the, you know, expectation for you on that. As far as LUS fiber, we've also engaged a highly sought-after recruiting firm to help us identify a permanent director for LUS fiber. We are, we're negotiating the contract terms with them currently, and those are being reviewed by the, by the firm themselves. And once the contract is executed, we expect, per their timeline, that it will take three months to identify a permanent director. Of course, there could be a delay in the start date, depending on, you know, those particulars. As the mayor president alluded to, for the police chief, I'm taking them one by one, so if you want me to stop and answer any questions specifically, please, please do so. As you're aware, our initial search turned up four candidates, which we didn't feel was a large enough pool from which to select a permanent chief of police. You know, we could have the permanent chief in that pool, and it wouldn't have been probably the fair thing to do to them, because there wasn't a large enough pool. We went out, and we do believe that a lot of the, the reason for a lower candidate pool was because of COVID, because of the inability to either test or travel, interview, all of those things, because of restrictions, or quite frankly, concerns. So we went out and we did another search, and we turned up, I believe, eight qualified candidates, I think there were nine, maybe one wasn't qualified, eight qualified candidates. The state examiner has set that date for October 29th. Once those results are certified by us, as you are aware, we do have a police chief search committee, which Councilwoman Liz Abear is a part of, and they will, the request will be to interview and vet the, the... And the request will be to interview and vet the qualified candidates to ultimately recommend three candidates, hopefully three, maybe four candidates to the mayor president for consideration. And lastly, as far as the Parks and Recreation Department goes, come on!
I mean, you're doing a great job, but you've got about 10 hats you're trying to wear, you know?
In all seriousness, there is a lot going on with Parks and Recreation, as you saw on the parish council with turning over some parish parks to partnerships. You'll see again on this particular agenda that we're partnering with a tennis association to take over for Beaver Tennis and Thomas Park as well. So there's a lot that's going on with Parks and Recreation right now in terms of what the future looks like for Parks and Recreation. We want to get that settled before we would pursue a permanent director of Parks and Recreation. So we've got a lot of great things happening within Parks and Rec, a lot of momentum going. And, you know, we're going to expect that that's going to continue. And as soon as we have the future Parks and Rec model laid out, then we'll pursue a director. But again, just to kind of like recap, make sure I don't miss anything going on with Parks and Rec. Parish parks is a big piece of it. Public-private partnerships through the tennis association, we're looking at partnering with swimming. It has certainly been our interest and our pleasure to find that those associations that are working so closely with the specific facilities, whether it be baseball fields, swimming, tennis centers, they have the most interest in those particular facilities. And we are working to empower them to really, you know, take over the operations, maintenance, and management of those facilities. And so we really are excited about, you know, what we're seeing. But that's, you know, ongoing. And as I've stated at the Recreation Advisory Commission meetings, you know, we're in this for a little while longer still. What that looks like and what that means, I'm not sure. I don't want to make a commitment, because I know you'll hold me to it. But I know that, because I've worked with a lot of you on Parks and Recreation issues, we're working hard to establish the new model of Parks and Recreation before naming a permanent director.
Is it my impression that we also are having a consulting firm or something? You spoke about that last night at the commission meeting?
Yes.
Can you elaborate on that?
Yes, absolutely. So as part of the budget that was passed, we are going forward with some additional consulting. And it's going to be LCG-wide. The initiative is initiative of the mayor president's office. And it's called, we call it 10-10-10. That's doing 10% more with 10% less over the course of 10 years. And we are starting with Parks and Recreation. And the idea is to, and by the way, the consulting firm is KPMG, who did our 3-1-1 system. We continue to work closely with them. They are a global auditing firm. But they're known for implementing and employing technology to find efficiencies, eliminate redundancies, and, you know, make us overall more customer service friendly. And so honestly, before all of this, we identified parks as an opportunity to use more technology. You know, we're kind of old school still in Parks and Rec. So let's, you know, implement the technology. All of our parents are online, all of our kids, the parents of the athletes are all online. Let's employ that to a greater way, make, take greater advantage of the technologies that are available to us to reserve a pavilion, book a party at a swimming pool, you know, and whatnot. So we are implementing that 10-10-10 initiative, starting with Parks and Recreation. So that's also very exciting. And we expect that there will be some excellent recommendations that come out of this that will also shape that future model that I'm referring to for Parks and Recreation.
And that does sound, that sounds wonderful in terms of the technology because we talked about needing a little bit more of that as far as if you wanted to reserve a particular space for a park that you had to go over there and actually walk in and bring your money. So that'll definitely make it more user-friendly. I guess I would love to see us move forward with a director in charge of the department. And please don't take that personally because you've done a good job. But I said you have 10 million hats you have to wear. So, but because I know that there's way more than just technology in a Parks and Rec department. There is a lot of programming that needs to happen in terms of, we have so many sports programs, so many facilities. You know, I don't find that we're keeping our facilities up just with particular trash pickup that we need to be doing at this point in the game. And that's, you know, that's a lot of things, a lot of moving parts that it would be nice. And I think the morale in the whole department would be, not that, again, not that it's not good now, but I think for them to know they had a permanent director moving forward. And so I guess I would just encourage that we, you know, maybe move that timeframe up as quick as we can or faster than we can, or the, you know, the technology that we're trying to, the 10-10-10. I'm not sure what the timeframe on that is. But, you know, I think it's almost been a year or so since we've had, six months plus, since we've had a director in Parks and Rec. Has it been that long?
No.
Just seems like it, there's been so much going on, seems like.
You should be in my shoes.
Yeah. Well, that's what I'm saying, you can't even do it. You have so many things going on. So I'm trying to help you out here.
I disagree with that. I think she's done a great job. I think she's very.
Oh, she's juggling it all.
Our team of staff has also helped out. We call them our associate director there.
No, and please don't.
Let me build on something real quick.
Don't take my words out of my mouth in that. I'm not saying that she's doing a bad job.
But we have to address some, technology's good and that's fantastic. But we also have to recognize that there are some families in our community that don't have access to technology. So one aspect that we're also looking at, across department-wise, is transportation and helping to get all of our families connected, one way or the other. Some people are just old school, I don't care how much technology you have, you're just not going to use it. We're not getting rid of that component. But if we can do, find ways to do more with less, find ways, I heard a gentleman talk about programs, find ways to do that. And I believe this would help us to do that.
Okay. Well, that's, I mean, that's really what I'm looking for, just, you know, the programming again.
And pickleball, Nanette. I heard you say something about that.
Wait, we need more pickleball. It's just, yes. So somebody asked about a kickball league at the meeting last night, huh?
There you go.
You got that?
I'm all about that.
I'm on it. Okay, now, thank you. I just, again, I put this on the agenda, all these, because I really just really wanted an update on where we were with it. Because, you know, again, nothing, not to criticize what's been being done, but just to emphasize the importance that we move forward and really start putting these people in place. So I thank you for following up with that. And you're doing a great job with Parks and Rec.
Ms. Ebert?
Sidra, you mentioned the 10-10-10. And it's getting late, but do you mind emailing us some information about that? Or maybe calling me tomorrow? We could talk more about the 10, I'm interested in hearing more about that.
You betcha.
Thank you.
You bet.
Okay, let's move along. Chairman, please read item number 12.
Boards and Commissions Meeting Attendants and Expectations of Members.
Ms. Ebert?
Thank you, Chairman. I brought this up because if you all recall, I guess a couple of months ago, we had those really long meetings where we appointed all those new board positions. And whenever I was promoting these possible new board positions, trying to get people to apply and get more involved, get more engaged, I had a lot of questions asking me, a lot of questions from constituents asking me, when do they meet, what do they do, where do they meet? What is expected of me if I do volunteer my time? And I wasn't able to answer a lot of those questions. There were some, I was more knowledgeable on others. And whenever I would ask our staff, our staff would say, well, we don't have a collected list on meeting times, dates, or anything. So I was going to bring it up for discussion and possibly even make the recommendation of these three things. Having these, and then, and I guess the other point is during budget, I would hear from people that were on the commission, those boards are commissioned, that would say, we haven't met in months, or, you know, I wish they would take more, value our opinions more, gotten us more involved earlier. So I feel like putting these, these, I guess, suggestions or requirements, or whatever we want to call them, into effect will help us. But then also at the council level, when Jeremy's getting these resumes, he can speak to when they meet, how they meet. So I was going to make these three suggestions. Is scheduling, having that each of these boards and commissions schedule meetings on a regular basis, whether it's monthly, every other month, or quarterly, that each board send out the mission function and the meeting times and dates and to our council office and also to the administration, so they can have that information as well. And then it's also come to my attention that these board members don't have a requirement for how many meetings they have to attend or how many they can miss. And I think that's important because we want active board members. We want engaged board members who can make a difference. Or if they can't, let's make room on the board for someone who really wants to be on there. So possibly putting provisions in place that would have, you know, three strikes, three misses your route, something to those extent. Paul, I know that you received an email from Veronica and I about this. Did you ever get a chance to look at it? On the 5th of this month? No, that's okay. I was going to put this in a, I assume I would need to put this in a resolution, Paul? Do you mind making Paul live?
Okay. So we can sort it all out, but depending upon the particular board or commission you're dealing with, some are controlled by specific state law that have parameters. Others are controlled by you as the governing authority. Some are controlled by joint council issues. But either way, if we can, if the state law doesn't prohibit it, if we're dealing with a state board or a commission that's created by state statute, we can integrate that. And then the other way we would do it is through the ordinances or resolutions. We might want to think about, maybe the best way would be to amend, remember when we went through all the reorg ordinances that we had to do by June because of the charter? It might be best if we simply amend that, each ordinance.
Oh, wow. So we would have to come to the council and amend each and every one that we did already?
If you would, if you want it with some teeth, in terms of it being a requirement.
True.
Otherwise, it would be something that that board or commission could voluntarily choose to follow. You know? But we can certainly talk in a little bit further detail. I can get the list of all the boards and commissions and we can go through them, you know, one by one.
Sure. I'd like to go ahead and do that. So you and I can do that. I guess this is a discussion item to bring this up to us and also the administration to know that's something that has popped up and been on my radar. So that's something I'll be working on. So if that's something you're interested in or have feedback or want something to add to that, I welcome the feedback. So let me know. Then Paul, you and I'll get together and talk about.
And we do have, we do have what is called a mother ordinance.
Yes, thank you, Veronica.
And that, maybe that one ordinance could be amended. And that was done in 96. And if there is other legislation which speaks to a specific board, you know, state legislation, well, that would supersede the mother ordinance or whatnot. But instead of amending 34 ordinances, maybe we can just amend the mother ordinance.
Perfect. I'll send this to you, Paul, again, so we can look at it. And Veronica, we can, I'm including you on that as well. And that's all I had. Thank you all.
Thanks. On item number 12, Ms. Vida, had any public comments?
No, sir.
Okay, let's move along. Chairman, please read item 13.
Old Federal Courthouse.
Okay, Old Federal Courthouse. Mary, can you come up, please? Introduce yourself and let's go.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, good night.
Mary Sloman, Director of Development and Planning. I am here tonight to give you an update on the federal courthouse project downtown. Back in December of 2019, our department did receive an initial set of plans submitted by the developer. We were, we did our processes and submitted our responses to them based on those plans. And since then, we have not received any further applications. In early July, there was some conversation at your council meeting about the progress and where things were with that development. And it was mentioned that we would hear from the developer at a future meeting in August. After that meeting, we received a new set of plans in our office. We held those plans for our review processes because we wanted two things to happen, actually. We knew that, by looking at the plans, we could tell that they were substantially different from what we had originally reviewed and submitted responses to back in December. And secondly, we were anticipating that the developer was going to come and present to all of you in August. So when that didn't happen, I asked in September to be placed on the council agenda. I was supposed to be here at the last meeting, but here we are today. So I just wanted to give you a couple notable changes because I know that that was what was requested. So here we go. In terms of residential units, the proposed plans in December had 67 total units between all three buildings. The plans that we currently have in our office show a total of 78 residential units. So that went from 67 to 78. A couple other changes that we noted from the first set of plans to the second set were the removal of the community building. They doubled the number of parking spaces with the removal of that building. And the future leasing space is outlined in the courthouse courtroom. So that is there. And then all of the commercial space that was in the courthouse on the first floor is no longer in the new plans. So I wanted to offer that as an update to all of you. And I know that if you have any questions, you have the information of the developer to reach out to them with questions.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any, any public comments? Okay, let's move to ordinance for final adoption. This is a public hearing. Speaker sheets are available for anyone wishing to address the council. The five-minute rule does apply. Chairman, please read item number 14.
City Ordinance 81, 2020. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council recognizing and ratifying the declaration and certification of a public emergency as stated in Emergency Ordinance 80, 2020, and providing for the rehabilitation of the Vero School Row Sewer Lift Station.
Motion by Ms. Nanette Cook, second by Mr. Andy Nakan. Council discussion. I see there is none. Ms. Williams, any public comments?
No, sir.
Need a vote from the council to adopt the ordinance.
District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved.
Announcement on vacancies on board and commission. Chairman, please read item number 15.
A vacancy exists on the Board of Zoning Adjustment for the remainder of an unexpired three-year term through 01/30/2022. This is an alternate position. Applicants must be city of Lafayette residents. A vacancy will exist on the People's Safety Initiative Board as of 12/1/2020. This is a one-year term. Applicants must be community organizers. A vacancy exists on the People's Safety Initiative Board for the remainder of an unexpired two-year term through 08/31/2022. Applicants must be dieticians. A vacancy will exist on the People's Safety Initiative Board as of 12/1/2020. This is a three-year term. Applicants must be medical doctors. A vacancy will exist on the Lafayette Water Works District South Board as of 12/1/2020. This is a three-year term. Applicants must be district residents. Individuals wishing to submit a resume for the above volunteer vacancies must be a registered voter and a resident of Lafayette Parish. Yearly ethics training for all appointees is required, as is financial disclosure under certain circumstances. Resumes are to be forwarded to Veronica L. Williams, Clerk of the Council, PO Box 4017C, Lafayette, Louisiana, 70502, or email to bcLafayette@lafayetteLA.gov no later than noon Tuesday, November 17th, 2020, with appointments to be made at the December 2nd, 2020, regular meeting of the Lafayette City Council. Resume submissions are public record.
Okay, consideration apartments, consider apartments by the council as a whole through the boards and commission. Chairman, please read item number 20.
Appointment to the Downtown Development Authority Board for a three-year term effective 3/1/2020. Appointment is made from a nomination list supplied by One Acadiana.
The submitted One Acadiana list is as follows. Colin Carme, John Peterson, and Gus Rizende. Gus Rizende is the incumbent in One Acadiana, is his recommendation.
And before you make your nominations, Anita beg no, she did sign in to support Gus Rizende, who's the incumbent.
Okay, so let's do the nomination. Ms. Ebert?
Move to nominate Gus Rizende.
I see no other nomination. So Gus is appointed.
You could vote.
Okay, let's vote on it.
District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 1?
Yes.
Rizende is appointed.
Rizende is appointed.
Direct appointments. Apartment by the council members, mayor, president, and/or any other direct apartment authority. Jeremy, please read.
City Council District 2 appoints Dr. Jennifer Jackson to the Recreation Advisory Commission for a four-year term effective September 25, 2020 through July 31, 2024.
Okay, introductory ordinance. Items 34 and 35 have been deferred indefinitely. I need a motion and a second, motion by Ms. Cook? Second by Ms. Abear, introducing global. Items 22 through 33 and item 36 through 38. Chairman, please read.
City Ordinance 82, 2020. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the Unified Development Code so as to reclassify 308-312 Sunnyvale Avenue and 308-313 Oak Street, case number ZON 2020-14, 308-312 Sunnyvale Avenue and 308-313 Oak Street Administrative Rezoning, located generally north of Johnson Street, west of North College Road, and south of Orsono Road, rezoning the subject properties from commercial-heavy to residential single-family. City Ordinance 83, 2020. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the Unified Development Code so as to reclassify the property of Top Tier Development Group LLC, case number ZON 2020-16, 106, 108, 112, 114, Whittington Drive Rezoning, located generally west of Oak Crest Drive, south of Johnson Street, and east of Catherine Street. The particular parcel being rezoned from commercial-heavy to residential mixed. City Ordinance 84, 2020. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the Unified Development Code so as to reclassify the property of Ivette Sims, case number ZON 2020-17, 304 Surrey Street Rezoning, located generally south of Surrey Street, west of Louisiana Avenue, and north of St. Charles Street. The particular parcel being rezoned from commercial-heavy to mixed-use neighborhood. City Ordinance 85, 2020. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the fiscal year 1920 operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government to provide for adjustments of revenue and appropriation estimates. City Ordinance 86, 2020. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the fiscal year 1920 operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by creating a new fund named Police and Fire Sustainability and Resiliency Fund 278 and transferring $10 million out of Fund 101 City General Fund from the proceeds of the CARES Act reimbursement to provide funding for public safety needs and for future mandated police and fire cost-of-living adjustments as required by Louisiana revised statutes and local ordinances. City Ordinance 87, 2020. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council authorizing the Lafayette Mayor President to execute the attached agreement between the United States Department of Justice Drug Enforcement Administration and the Lafayette Police Department and amending the fiscal year 1920 operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by increasing revenues in the amount of $19,180.25 received from the DEA and appropriating within the Lafayette Police Department. City Ordinance 88, 2020. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the fiscal year 1920 operating and capital budgets of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by increasing anticipated revenues in the amount of $2,519,759 from the Federal Transit Administration Section 5307 Urbanized Area Formula Grant and appropriating these funds along with the required match in the amount of $182,584 for use within the Public Works Department Transit Division. City Ordinance 89, 2020. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the fiscal year 1920 capital budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by increasing anticipated revenues in the amount of $292,774 from the Federal Transit Administration Section 5339 Bus and Bus Facilities Grant along with the required match in the amount of $51,666 for federal fiscal year 1920 for the use within the Public Works Department Transit Division. City Ordinance 90, 2020. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council authorizing the filing of an application to the U.S. Department of Homeland Security for the Fire Prevention and Safety Grant for the Lafayette Fire Department. City Ordinance 91, 2020. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council authorizing the filing of an application to the U.S. Department of Homeland Security for a Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Grant for the Lafayette Fire Department. City Ordinance 92, 2020. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council authorizing the filing of an application to the U.S. Department of Homeland Security for an Assistance to Firefighters Grant for the Lafayette Fire Department. City Ordinance 93, 2020. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the fiscal year 1920 operating and capital budgets of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by increasing revenues in the amount of $459,852 received from the State of Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development Transportation Alternatives Program, approving the use of existing capital funds in the amount of $123,709 for a required local match for the purpose of funding bicycle and pedestrian facilities located within the City of Lafayette and authorizing the Lafayette Mayor President to execute any documents necessary for the completion of the projects listed herein. City Ordinance 96, 2020. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council authorizing the Lafayette Mayor President to enter into a contract with Acadiana Community Tennis Association, Inc. relative to the operation and maintenance of Beaver Park and Thomas Park Tennis Facilities. City Ordinance 97, 2020. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council authorizing and directing the Lafayette Mayor President to execute the poll attachment agreement between the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government and Link &amp; Learn LLC. City Ordinance 98, 2020. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the fiscal year 2021 operating and capital budgets of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by increasing revenues in the amount of $606,583 received from the State of Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development Transportation Improvement Program, approving the use of existing capital funds in the amount of $166,101 for a required local match for the purpose of funding bicycle and pedestrian facilities located within the City of Lafayette and authorizing the Lafayette Mayor President to execute any documents necessary for the completion of the projects listed herein.
Okay. Comments from the public concerned above introductory ordinance?
We have three speakers, all of them wanting to speak on the intro item number 26 with reference to the Police Department, $10,000 for the COLA or Cost of Living Adjustment. The first speaker is Tara Fogelman, followed by Jared Eubanks.
Once more.
One too.
Tara Fogelman, The Village 337, Unit 27. I am offended by anything that comes up in front of the city council when it comes to the potential of our city police department getting any more money at this time. I am offended because currently we still have police officers sitting home getting paid who killed Trayford Peloram. I'm offended because of after I read the coroner's report that the family had to pay for and how he died. I'm offended because of what I read today in regards to the police footage and police being told, "Leave your personal knives on the ground" and tampering with a crime scene. I'm offended when twin boys get beaten in the head, handcuffed, slammed on the cement, then released into a dark parking lot after one was also tasered and the city police department doesn't even call 911 on 911 for the damage that they did to the boys to see about getting them medical help, which they really needed that night. I'm offended by the thought of any money extra put to the side, mandated, whatever, $10 million, when a woman who was abused by her husband and is being choked to where she can't breathe, and she finally gets her hands free and she's fighting back so he gets scratched in the face. And as she's dialing 911, the abuser takes the phone and hangs up, and then in retaliation, dials 911 on the female. And because the male has scratches in his face because the woman had to fight him off to defend herself, the woman gets charged with domestic violence yesterday and child endangerment, and she's arrested in front of her four little children by the city police department. I can go on and on with the stories that I run into daily when it comes to our city police department. I have nothing against the fire department. They didn't kill anybody, not that I know of recently. They don't carry guns and shoot at people 17 times and hit them 10 times in the back and the chest and the leg and the hand and fire their, fired up a fireman. Don't shoot guns when people are pumping gas at a gas station and bullets going into a building while people are working inside as a cashier so she can provide for her children. The CARES Act should not be used to be able to put $10,000, $10 million to the side for a fire and for the city police department. The city police department can't even act right. I mean, hell, your interim chief of police can't even act right. He friendly bops downtown with the Cajun militia who antagonized your taxpayers a couple of weeks ago and caused a major scene. So I'm offended. I don't know what's your process here about this money, but it does say that the mayor, parish president at the end of item number 26, so it must be your idea. It's not for training, it's not to keep us safe. Really, really tired of money that should be given to our community to help uplift our community, to help educate the youth, and to offer programs in our community. I am tired of always hearing coming out of your mouth either raises or the police need more money. That's all I have to say.
Jared Eubanks, followed by the final speaker, Keith Falk.
Good evening, this is Jared Eubanks. I fully expect you guys to adopt these in globo, and I just have some comments so that I know we're thinking about these two weeks down from the line when they're here for final adoption. I guess the first one is, how much information do we have? How long does this $10 million subsidize the state mandated? And even if we were to go through with the council voted on cost-of-living raises. Additionally, do we expect those raises to significantly outpace the increase in tax revenues over that same time period? And then I guess the big question is, why do we feel the need to set it aside in advance? This CARES money is coming because, you know, unprecedented losses in local governments all over the country due to COVID. And this is what we're gonna do. We're gonna set it aside for this purpose, essentially taking those raises off the table for any discussion going forward when we've had large slashes to services in our budget this year, when we can see that they might again happen next year because we know there's still issues with that budget. It kind of strikes me as odd that we would set this money aside so that it's not part of the conversation going forward. It doesn't appear that we've done that in the past. I don't know why suddenly we're doing that going forward here. It also reminds me of the library now. The library, the money they had set aside was voted on by taxpayers that it went there. But we still felt the need that having that surplus was problematic then, and we moved it out of there. So it seems weird that we would take this money and place it in kind of an isolation piggy bank for this purpose. And definitely in light of the attitudes lately, it does feel as if it's just a way to make that decision in advance to make sure that it doesn't come up as something that's considered in the future. And I don't, I can't support that idea. I guess those are my, my big points is just, how, how much do we expect this to insulate us? For how long? And how much do we expect those to outpace revenue growths? And then why are we setting this aside when we know the general fund in general has issues all over the board, not just with this? It seems short-sighted, I think. Thanks.
Final speaker, Keith Falk.
I have no power, my name is Keith Falk, concerned community activist. Have no problem with the $10,000 going to the fire department. But given the actions of the police department over the past couple of months, weeks, they don't deserve any more money on top of what they already have. They don't deserve any more money. And I'm asking this council not to grant them any more money until Mr. Gittery decides to do a citizens review board with subpoena power. In, in, in the introductory item, it states for safety. We don't feel safe. I'm a taxpayer and I don't feel safe. I could be driving on the road and I see blue lights. They don't even have to be behind my car. I'm paranoid. So they don't deserve any more money. So until a citizens review board is enacted with subpoena power, I don't think they deserve to get another cent, another penny. And let's talk about apology. I know it's another issue, but the staff should have received an apology. Now, the apology the citizens need is for the words of the interim chief of police, public TV. When he stated, "Y'all can protest, but we got guys that work 24 hours that's trained for this." That's supposed to sound like a threat, a threat to the community. That's what it sounds like. We'll call in more guys. Then right after that, you get a U.S. Congressman posting threats. Right after that, you got Cajun militia standing outside this building, talking, talking to city policemen, laughing, having big conversations. "Right supremacist, proud boss." How the community supposed to feel safe? So as for the $10,000 raise? I meant the $10 million funds going to the police department? I'm not in support of that. I'm not in support of that, and I'm not in support of any more funds going to the police department until action is done, till changing policy is done. It's done, 'cause nothing, nothing has been done to give us citizens the security and the safety. Give us the benefit of the doubt of walking out the house and not walking behind your vehicle four or five times making joke. A policeman is not following you. Walking in the store, policeman parked by the store. "Oh, I ain't going to that store, you got a cop there." That's how we feel. Not only, not only 'cause of the actions of the police department, Not only, not only because of the actions of the police department, but the actions of this government. Mr. Mayor President, you gave that press conference and you allowed the chief to stand up and say that on the microphone, on local TV. It's not how this government's supposed to operate. It's not how this government's supposed to run. All my time as a kid, as a young adult, I ain't never seen a mayor or a mayor president get on TV and give his chief the authority to say they can call in more guys. Their guys will work 24 hours to go against citizens of its own community. So when I say the citizens of Lafayette wasted their vote, they did.
No other speakers, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Any counsel discussion? Okay, let's call for vote to introduce in global items 22 through 33 and 36 through 38.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
Motion to introduce in globo is approved.
Regular city council meeting adjourned.